This is done. This is all draft.
How old are you?
I'm twenty-eight.
The county meeting doesn't move until December 10th. So, it can go tomorrow, but they can't act on it until December.
So we'll get the activity.
Yeah, so I'm gonna send it. I just wanted to wait till after this, so I think that's one of my calls.
So there's no votes to wait until?
No, we can't vote until we get back from county. We can't vote the same day.
We have a public hearing tonight. Local law five to the year 2011. Ending chapter ninety, property maintenance. Repealing existing chapter one-twenty zoning law, the code of Rosas Point. And establishing a new chapter four-one-twenty zoning laws and codes for Rosas Point. I open the meeting up with comments from the public at this time. There being no comments, I close public hearing. Um, there's no changes or stuff, so we'll send us on to the county planning board tomorrow morning. And then after they vote for it, uh, by middle of December, we should have it filed with the department schedule. Melissa, you want to address the board on the, uh, realizations of that?
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'll just take a couple of seconds and give you a quick update on, uh, a couple of items. First of all, Monica presented you with the timeline for the zoning code and property made it to you. Have that, so we can refer to that. We'll be in touch over the next few weeks as we work this through the rest of the process. We are almost there. Uh, the other thing that I would like to call your attention to is the, uh, head out. I apologize, I slipped through. I'm trying to draw out the names. I'm not trying to get fancy, I just print them in. So I tried to make it as bold as I could. Uh, this is a one-page information sheet on the micro enterprise grant funding that we just applied for. This is the application that River Street did for us with Jerry's assistance. We, of course, held a couple of public hearings on it. There's been some publicity, and I know that Jerry is fielding questions. Uh, and I wanted to be sure that she had something concise that she could hand out to interested individuals. And I also wanted to bring it to the board's attention because, in my experience, anytime you take public money and you hand it out to the private sector, it's a good example of no good deed going unpunished. It's difficult because people will need to apply for funding, and the review committee will need to decide who meets the criteria to be funded. And so I wanted to be sure that everybody had this, so that you can see that there are, like, all-state grant programs. There are hoops that people have to jump through, including lots of paperwork. You have to be eligible, either lower mod income business owner yourself, or you have to create a low-mod income job. There are specific requirements for use of grant funding. The grant program that is put together has to meet the, um, program guidelines that we set for what we wanted to do with the money, which is, of course, try to advance business development in the village. Um, there's a training course. It's eight sessions, eight-session training course that you have to go through. So I really like to be sure we try as much as possible to get the information out clearly from the beginning to everyone. And it'll be really important that, when hopefully we get our award, we do some good outreach, so that we hit as many potential interested business owners or new businesses as possible.
That's actually key, because fifty-one percent of the money has to go to startups. So it's folks we haven't even heard from yet, because they're not in business right now. So that's, that's gonna be key to outreach, is obviously finding those folks, which is gonna be a lot, that, I mean, could be more difficult. It might be easy, but you're, you're hoping to bring in new businesses, so we're gonna potentially need outreach regionally.
Now, is that something, let's say, take the downtown. Is that something that we can work with the current landlords to help them? Or to get, to work with them to attract tenants to the spaces? Is that, is that something that we see that we will be doing?
Ideally, that's what you're hoping for, yeah.
Yeah. And just kind of building on that, we have a little bit of work left to do in the grant program. This two thousand and five, uh, grant that we got. And we're hoping to meet with the new business group and potential landlords. Maybe get them on the phone if we can't get them there that day, to talk about what needs to happen to try to fill up some of the storefronts. And so this, you know, we'll be saying that we hope we get this funding. There, um, the governor's office is a part of state development. They're saying they're gonna announce these grants spot before Christmas. So with any luck, it will be a really quick turnaround on this, and, and no going in mid-year.
Because their sheet, they're just maybe, the sheet that Melissa gave out is the same summary of the program that was, um, passed out by Jerry around the village and was in the paper, so it's consistently the same summary, that same material.
So, so what we're asking is if anyone's interested, please send Jerry their name and number, and we'll put them on the list, and make sure when, hopefully, we do get the grant award, that we, we get in touch with them. So, just wanted to, but again, you will, I guarantee you, you will hear, they will, not everyone will be happy about this, but I tell you, the more we can give the story straight in writing upfront to them.
This is the one that we already have six separate entries for?
I think it's letters of interest, right?
Yes, we have, I think we have seven letters of interest. A couple of them, certainly one of them, I'm fairly certain is going to be too large for business to meet the criteria. So there's already some, you know, some that would be wonderful to help them, but I'm not sure they're gonna meet the criteria. But yes, we got seven, I think we got seven letters of interest for the submission, which was great, because then we could, when we sent this in, they, they went in with the application saying, "See, we have already all this interest." And, and that was one of the things you didn't have to do, but they encouraged you to do. So I was very happy with that. That initial response was very good, so.
So hopefully, we'll be, uh, we're gonna sit down with the mayor and Jerry. Maybe on the twenty-eighth, if we can work that out. That's the day we're shooting for to meet with the businesses. And just talk about a coordinated approach, so we're all organized, and we have our stories straight, and figure out where we go from here. But a lot of this, I think, is, uh, is, River Street is also gonna be doing a report for the board based upon what we hear from the business group, the landlords, the research they've done about possible next steps to take in the revitalization effort and the marketing effort next year. And, um, so we'll have some things to think about in two thousand and twelve. Okay? So that's a quick update on that. Now, on the D and H project, we had an excellent meeting, uh, a week and a half ago with the representative from State Historic Preservation. He was very receptive to the rebid plan that we put together. We had DOT on the phone that day. And so we think that we're in pretty good shape to put the rebid package together. Before we do that, I wanted to come to the board and make sure you are in agreement, that you are okay with this, before we actually run it by DOT and State Historic Preservation in writing. And then we go ahead and actually put the plans and specs together. So just to quickly go through, um, we have the whole project value engineer. We figure, we figured out the cost savings. We think we'll hit close to our budget, which, at this point, is up to, thanks to, thanks to contributions from the Historical Society and the mayor securing the power authority money and the I E P money, we're at about seven seventy-eight-five-hundred in terms of, of construction monies. So we're up over a third of a million, plus the window replacement cost. Uh, the cost of materials is also gonna be paid through the I E P program, which basically adds to the budget that we have to spend. That was a huge, uh, issue that we've resolved with Shippeau, that they will allow us to use the replacement windows instead of trying to restore the old. So, um, we're working on that. We're gonna go ahead and spec out asphalt, standard three-tab, old-fashioned shingles. Put the slate in as an alternate. If we can afford to do it, great, but if not, we'll be putting the, the asphalt roof on. And then maybe down the road, when those shingles in twenty-five years need to be replaced, then maybe they'll be my new slate roof on. Um, as I said, we're waiting for quotes from Marvin Window on the window replacements, so you can figure that in. The key points for the board are on the top of the second page. Um, I wanted to be sure that, um, you're clear on the way this has been set up. In order to save money, we pulled some finishing work out of the project. Two of those items have to be completed in order for the village to say the project is done and get their money back. One, um, well, obviously demolition of the addition, that, that has to be done before they can finish the project. But also interior and exterior painting. Now, I know the Historical Society's thinking they'll have volunteers. Hopefully, they'll have donations to paint. But in order to get the project closure reimbursed, that will have to be done. We're hoping to save forty thousand on that. The painting prices were between thirty and sixty thousand. So we're, you know, huge, yeah, huge savings. Um, the other two items that we are trying to approach differently, and actually just pull them right out of the project for the Historical Society to finish down the road, are non-essential interior doors and trim, you know, chair rail. And also beadboard, uh, replacement. We're thinking we're gonna try to encapsulate the current ceiling, um, put up gypsum wallboard wherever we can, and then the beadboard can be put back on afterwards. And again, that was a, a major concession that we, we did get from Shippeau in our meeting. So, that's the changes in terms of the, the, what's in the contract. The other item that I did wanna bring to your attention, um, we have been approached for additional funds from the engineer and the architect. I have said on the board's behalf consistently, there's no more money. The one thing they have asked us for is money just to cover the cost of the documents and the discs, and actually handing them out through that whole bid process. And Erwin Anthony's estimated twenty-five hundred for that. So I wondered if the board would be willing to entertain that. If we get lucky and the bids do come in, um, under budget, we can go to DOT and try to swing with some of the, the RA money to cover that. If not, it would be, end up being a village expense. So that, you don't need to give me the answer that tonight. It's just something that I, I need to ask you to think about. The other option is the village reproducing and handing out all of those documents and keeping track of them and handling questions to the bidder. Personally, I would rather not put that responsibility on the office. It's pretty legalistic stuff, and, you know, just talking a job that's gonna top out, that probably, you know, again, three quarters of a million dollars. So I'd rather have it in the hands of the people that have the expertise with the project staff. Okay? So are you okay? Can we go ahead and, and draw up our plans to send Shippeau and DOT to the hope of getting their okay on the rebid?
Need a motion vote?
When, I have a question first, but, oh, yeah, I could ask George if he'd like this one. Um, but when would you anticipate the, um, the demolition of the addition and the interior and exterior painting having to be done?
The demo will be kind of on the front side of the contract, so hopefully, in the relatively early spring, we have to do the remediation. We have to go in and take out all the hazardous materials that were identified. Not a huge amount, light paint for the most part, and a little tiny bit of asbestos. And, um, that has to be done. Once that's done, then the village will get in and do the demo and the addition, so then the contract can do the finished work. The painting, I see at the other end of the contract, probably late summer, early fall, would be my expectation.
Need a motion vote?
Yeah, I'll make a motion and go ahead with the, uh, new project. Guess that includes the money too, if I heard it. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion?
So as far as the volunteer, the painting, and the village is gonna take care of the demo, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, but the painting of the exterior and the interior, that's all gonna be from volunteers, including the purchase of the paint, correct?
That, Dan, I can't say. And that's why I really wanna bring this to the board's attention. Hopefully, yes. Hopefully, you know, people will donate paint. Hopefully, will, people will show up to paint. But when you're depending on volunteers, it's kind of nameless, faceless people. And so ultimately, it has to be painted, which means the village would, you know, has the ultimate responsibility for it.
I, I'm very confident that we'll get enough volunteers to do the actual work, the painting. I'm not totally confident we're gonna, yeah, I'll paint, paint, don't.
Yeah, we can get them paid for painting, another painting, you know.
You know, small-town communities, I've lived here all my life, and I, I know that we'll, we'll get the volunteers. There's, I'm not concerned about that. I'm not sure we'll get that. I mean, you guys are nice enough to buy the paint for the, uh, gazebo, but I'm sure it wasn't more than what you first anticipated.
No, it looks nice, though.
It does look nice.
Labor was free.
All right, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Do you have any estimate of the cost of the paint? Was that part of the original bid package or not?
Well, paint and the, and the labor was about thirty or forty grand, right?
Uh, anywhere from thirty to, actually, a high of sixty.
And that was the labor and the materials?
And we don't, they don't have to cost out the materials, so I can't, I can't tell you. I mean, you could certainly probably give an estimate, but.
Twenty-five, thirty percent would be the materials, and then the rest is labor. So, on forty thousand, let's take ten thousand, twelve thousand out for paint, it's probably gonna be in the ballpark, and the rest of it is labor.
That's what I'm thinking, expect people to pay for that. I don't think that's gonna go.
I think that might be a, a good thing for, uh, maybe the Historical Society to do an outreach to all of the businesses in, that, that kind of, you know, the hardware stores and the supply companies in the county, and maybe see if, if they can get some donations there. I also believe that the Historical Society is willing to do some additional fundraising. But again, this is, I, you know, ultimately, with the, you know, the best stuff right there, so.
Right, right, right.
Can't tell you.
Any other discussion, board? There being no other discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you consent of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. You have the rest of my report in writing. If you have any questions, please let me know, okay? Thank you.
Comments from the public at this time? Anybody wishing to address the board, make a vote. There be nobody, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Okay, minutes in previous meeting, on the regular meeting of October seventeenth, a special meeting October twenty-sixth. You all have copies. Is there any addition or donations?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Moved by trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you consent of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. You have the bills. Do we have any additions or additions, I've seen?
We have one addition. It's to Erwin Anthony, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. That's engineering fees, uh, regards to the D and H.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills. Tonight is amended.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you consent of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Correspondents?
I'd like to second, I have one item. Received a letter to Montgomery Hall's Hook and Ladder. Dear mayor and trustees, we wish to inform you of two new members who have been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months. Frank Jeffrey Nemec and Scott Post, both of Rosas Point. Please act on these members, and we thank you for your time in this matter.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the nomination of the two people for the Montgomery Hall's Hook and Ladder.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you consent of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Carol. Reports to the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on the agenda is resolution for the upcoming election.
I'll read it.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, notice is hereby given that the board of trustees in the village of Rosas Point, New York, has on the seventh day of November two thousand and eleven, passed a resolution designating the offices to be voted on at the next village election. A copy of the complete resolution is as follows. Whereas the next general election for the officers shall be held on March twentieth, two thousand and twelve. And whereas the board of trustees is adopting a resolution designating the offices to be filled in such election and the terms. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Rosas Point designates the following offices are vacant at the end of the current official year, to be filled at the village election, to be on March twentieth, two thousand and twelve. Mayor, two-year term. Trustee, two-year. And another trustee, two-year. Be it further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to publish the resolution in the phone in the press republican. This resolution shall take effect immediately. The following question of the foregiving due will put to a roll call vote.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Roberts. And this is a roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. The next thing is discussion on maintenance of hedges in the village. As you're probably aware, board, we've got several, uh, pieces of property that have hedges right on the sidewalks. That is a real hindrance for people walking and snow remover. And, uh, we do have, and I think you have a copy of it, of the property maintenance. I think you got, uh, you could have a copy.
I don't know, babe, I didn't, I didn't watch you.
It says, "Heavy undergrowth, accumulation of plant growth, which is outside-laid, obtrusive, or determined to the health, shall be eliminated or removed. Hedges and shrubs shall be kept, droned, and trimmed." And grass is not to exceed six inches. And that's in the property maintenance code for the village. I think we've got a couple of vacant places where we have a problem. And there is penalties, if you wanna know about it, to not less than a hundred, not more than two hundred, for not doing it. I wanna know what the board wants to do. Do they want us, or want the village to contract out? And vacant spots, to put it on the taxes, or should we, like, one of them, I think, is... Go ahead.
I, I do believe we have to go through the, uh, the process, I think, with the code enforcement officer. You'll have to notify them.
I understand that, but I don't wanna wait till another meeting for permission.
No.
We'll have Mickey send him a letter, tell him it's a violation.
We're gonna have to go to the bank in some places. We gotta find out who the owners are.
Yeah, most of them are bank dogs now, the three possessions.
So, we will start tomorrow morning, if the board is in agreement.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, they did it for a fight once, they're...
Okay, just.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I just think we, and I'm in agreement that the sidewalks need to be cleared, and we're obviously in preparation for the snowplowing season again. But I just think it's really important not to single out one particular violation. I think that for people who may receive correspondence from a code enforcement officer, sometimes it can be very frustrating if you are being served with that, even though you may be in violation, when other things in the village are not being attended to. And I just think we need to be very careful with that. Maybe we can give my teacher a reminder to, to maybe take a quick trip around and make sure that we're treating all of our residents in the village the same way, and we're treating them all dearly. That's, I just think, to be fair, I think we just need to be, to be mindful of that.
Well, we really need, there's a couple places we really need to get at right now.
And I understand that, but, you know, even if, if, if we have a plan, I think that's better than just singling out one particular violation while we may be letting other.
It's not just one, there's two, couple, two or three.
Well, but, but it's the same topic, I guess what I'm saying to you.
Washington, that's the first one.
So.
That's the bank, that's the bank, there. We sent them a letter, they don't do it, they don't want to go in.
Absolutely not, do you?
Not with the taxes.
I don't, I don't know if there's any private homes in one of these, it's awful.
But I'm not, I'm talking about other property maintenance violations that may not contain the hedges.
Not necessarily, Eric, Eric, so.
So, you know, if you're, if you're serving a letter on someone about their hedge, and their neighbor has another issue that's not being addressed, I think we just need to be mindful of that. We need to be fair about the way we enforce our code, so.
Thank you, Kelly. So the board's okay with that? We can go ahead, move.
Yeah.
Okay, next thing on my agenda is discussion of the Sultan, Sultan, Sultan Sumoko. That's the, where we had the fire in June.
Thing I got, Georgia, if we vote on this, I have a tower down and everything. What's gonna happen with the tanks and stuff?
We have nothing to do with that.
Yeah, I mean, the salt.
That's up to him. He still owns the property, right? He's still owns the property, it's his responsibility. Uh, we're, we're just gonna take, if we do it, take the building down.
That's what I see. I was hoping there would be no, gas pumps there or nothing, nothing we got done, but, you know.
Well, we, we, he.
Any way we can probably contact Sumoko, or?
They probably will take him out, I don't know.
They're empty, though, they pump all the gas. I know that. They pump all the gas out. Yeah, now, one reconnect, and they close, they open it up, so the brace chocolate car. Like, see, we're going all the trouble to clean it all up, I'd like to see everything gone, myself, personally. I think he's having a cash flow problem.
Oh, yes, we know that. He called, he sent, sent the letter, that.
So I.
Now we gotta get the, the, something to forward to give him the timeline.
It's happened in June.
What?
I said this happened in June, so, yeah.
Well, we still have to give him the timeline.
I understand. You gotta give him thirty days?
Thirty, that's what I say, thirty days. You know, I say, I mean, at least start.
Yeah. We could tear it down pretty quick. Cut down, you know, Randy Bedard or somebody would be in there and...
In case you're interested to hear something that we probably should keep in mind, Randy Bedard is certified for asbestos and my paint.
Yeah.
We have a beautiful person. So that's, that's a work on paper.
Yes.
Anyway.
Thirty days seems fair to me.
For start or completion? For starting or completing?
We're saying completing, but I don't know if you can do it thirty days.
Somebody's gotta start, at least start by thirty days. If he doesn't, then by that, the next thirty days. Start it in thirty and complete it by six.
Well, there's an issue, and maybe we should have an executive session.
I'm making a motion to have an executive session.
Okay, second. Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call, roll, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And then we can, you know, come back in the regular session. Okay, discussion on a crosswalk for St. Patrick's Church area. We have been approached several times, and we have, we have sent letters to DOT. And DOT's come back, uh, saying that they're willing to put a crosswalk in wherever we want in that. that area. And there's some issues about that, I'm talking about. But we have to cut the curving, take the grass out, and cement it down so it's handicapped accessible. So I talked to Brian, and Brian says he doesn't have a problem with it, but he'll gonna put it in the budget for next year. But he can't do nothing this year.
Oh, I don't.
So, uh, I don't know if we need a motion for that or not. Have we budgeted the item, Carol?
Yeah, let's see.
Just budgeted it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, just to let people know what's going on, it's, we did not brought the ball here to stay. We may push that crosswalk, they wanted it on the south side of the church, but I think that's too dangerous with that curve. We push it further down, almost in front of the rectory.
Exactly. You're gonna verify the sidewalk in front of the rectory.
We'd have some work to do on the other side, but, so. Okay, thank you, board. Announcement. Holiday train, Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will be here on November twenty-fifth at ten thirty P.M. And as you know, I don't know, it's the fourth, fifth, year, six years, I lost track. But last year, they are doing us a favor because it was always later coming back into Canada. They called me up and said, "How about if we can stop on the way down?" It will be our one and only stop on the way down. But we'll move it up earlier for you and have it earlier of evening. So, that was a good idea. We did it, and I think it went well last year, and it would do the same thing this year. For the public, please bring some goods for the food shop. That's the only thing they ask. And they give the food shop a one thousand dollar check every year. So, it's a good thing, it's a good time. And then our village Christmas parade of toys will be December second at six forty-five P.M. You can start from the park and go into the village office with that. And this week, we got a call from the Marine Corps League. The Marine Toys for Top Train will be here Sunday, December fourth, at four P.M., four thirty P.M. So, that's another thing we started last year. We used to go to Plattsburgh, but apparently the length of Ross is quite better. At least I hope so. And last thing on my agenda, declare fire department Skidoo trailer surplus. I need a motion to that.
I'll make that motion. Surplus of Skidoo trailer for the fire depart, from the fire department?
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Roberts.
Got it.
Any discussion? If there is no discussion, all those in favor, vote 100% of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, and that's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
I don't really have anything on my agenda tonight, but I just want to mention the good job that the Altona Correctional Facility's done here in the village. They've done a lot of work that saved us a lot of labor. We kinda had an agreement before that, every week we'd buy them pizzas, so, you know. It was up to the board, now he's a member of the board, like I did earlier in the year, and so, we should probably try to fulfill that obligation. Once a week, we just get three or four pizzas, so I just want to throw that out to the board. Tracy's done a good job, he's done a lot of stuff for the village that saved us a lot of money, so, for three or four pizza parties, I think it's money well spent, so.
You're not afraid.
I bought it last week, uh, two, three weeks ago, and fire department did it last Thursday.
Okay, all right.
So we should speak with Tracy, is that...
Yeah. It usually tells us what day of the week and we just go and get, spend the money guys are working.
Sure, I'm good.
Lucky they're still working.
Yeah. Well, they're looking for work. They're lucky, they wanna stay here. They're lucky here.
That's good. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Baker.
I just wanted to bring up, I was asked to bring it up, the discussion of sale of the property back at Betty's Chicken Blower. I talked with Bobby Clark, he said you might as well get rid of it, just keep your right of way through, for your, like, four, five, six, or all that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I'd like to get back in the tax roll. I would too.
How did we acquire it anyways?
It was given to us by the county. At the time, at the time, there was some interest in industry going upon. And Superintendent Clark came to me and he says, you know, he says that's going up for taxes. So we ought to ask for that piece of property, because any industry moves in there of any size, we don't have the power to feed it. We'd have to put a substation in it, instead of getting ideal spot. So that's why, so, it cost us nothing.
Like Bobby said, you got twenty-three other acres, Steve.
Yeah, great. And we're okay to sell it, it was given to us for...
Yeah. As far as I know, we get it.
The only thing, I was, I was looking tonight at the, the law, and one of the things it says is there are two requirements, that we must determine that the land that we wish to sell is no longer needed for municipal purposes and enact a resolution to this effect. Have we really done that?
I don't think so.
And, and, you know, as far, I agree with you guys in terms of trying to find new ways for revenue, but you're talking about two hundred dollars a year on tax laws.
Yeah, but it's just not two hundred for villages, town, county, and so it's more than that.
Well, but, but is the, the value to the village of Rouse's Point more than two hundred dollars a year that we would collect in taxes? I mean, I know what you're saying, but...
Well, but again, I don't take your finger in it, right, don't, we sell it for...
But I am, 'cause I'm on the board in Rouse's Point, so I'm looking out for the, the municipality. Are, is two hundred dollars that we're gonna collect in our general fund worth making the decision that this is no longer needed by the municipality? I'm not convinced that the land's not needed.
What do you think, Bob? The property's worth...
Forty-eight thousand dollars.
I know what it's assessed for.
And that's what we have to sell it for by the law, if you read it.
So you're talking two hundred and five dollars on our taxes here in town? So, I mean, I, I just, I'm not, I guess I'm not in favor of it, because I'm not convinced that there's not a municipal purpose. You know, we're gonna, we just passed a resolution, we could potentially have a significantly different board come March, or making a decision that Rouse's Point doesn't need that land, and I'm not convinced of that. That's just the only thing, I guess, that I feel about it. So.
Well, in my feeling, kind of, is just, we turn around, sell it, and then we go, something comes up and we go ask the county for, you know, again, what's the county gonna say?
Oh, let's cross that bridge when we get there.
Well, we're actually prohibited from doing that, though, George. That's also in the law. You can't, you can't sell it and then expect to get it back.
No, 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 no. Let's say something else comes up, and you see a need.
That's right.
Some other property.
Yeah.
How is the county gonna feel if they get one piece of property and they sold it on this?
And again, I mean, are, are we, are we absolutely certain? And I, I, you know, I would certainly listen to Bobby's judgment, but I'm not convinced that municipality sometime in the future won't need that land.
I think with tight budgets, we can get forty-eight thousand dollars for it, put it back in the tax roll. It's, to me, it's, I mean, you're a math teacher.
I am. But again, I'm, I'm sitting here representing the village and whether or not there'd be a better interest for the municipality than, than the one-time deal of the sale of the land.
Plus we'll bring in another business in the village, too, right? They're gonna buy this, supposedly buy this property...
No, we backed out, done.
Oh, yeah, okay, didn't know that. Okay.
I was told the other day, he's talking at some of my place.
So, so is, does, do we have a buyer for it?
No.
Yeah, he was, he was interested in it.
Yeah, a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Well, let's put it on hold then, we can always wait another month or so and see what happens.
Yeah, but, yeah, well, depends what the purpose of the land was gonna be for it.
Oh, he was gonna...
I don't think it would hurt even to ask.
Yeah, the land, like, we might only get two hundred dollars a year for the land, but if they put something on it...
Yeah, he gonna have that, he's gonna put up a building, a shop, and big enough to build his log cabin sitting there for out there.
It could essentially be more than two hundred dollars a year if...
Well, but you're not talking about a business for Rouse's Point, you're talking about a shop where he's building what he's putting outside of town.
That's why I was asking, is there a buyer for it?
There, there was a guy interested.
So there was somebody interested.
We backed out.
Because my understanding was he was simply gonna put up a large storage facility that he could work inside of.
Yeah. Mike told me the other day that...
So, I got...
Yeah, he's looking for something else, something closer.
So, this is, we're just gonna hold this for now?
Well, yeah. There'll be no interest, it's gonna prove us to hang on to it.
If we had a buyer, if it was the right purpose...
How long have we owned the property? Since we've been, since I've been on the board, so.
And Bobby and the twelfth.
Yeah, well, when I first came on the board, Bobby was superintendent, so.
Either two thousand one or two thousand two, I think, or...
Well, it's at least ten years, so.
But again, I mean, I guess my curiosity would be, how, how did this individual know to even approach the village about this plot of land? We're not marketing the land, so how, how, how did this individual even know that we own the land?
Somebody told him, no doubt about it.
Yeah, he asked me, he...
I'm sorry?
Just brought it up.
I asked Mike Tetro.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you said.
Yeah. Mike Tetro's the one that told him.
Yeah.
So it's a...
Anything else, Tom?
Oh, yeah, I just got a, I'd like an executive session for personnel.
Okay, second. Moved by Montgomery, uh, by trustee Baker. Seconded by trustee Jefferson. For the executive session, roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. All right, trustee Roberts.
Um, I'd just like to give an update on the library situation right now. The roof, seems going very well with the roof. We were about three-quarters complete with one side remaining. Hopefully that'll be finishing up this week. Um, we have run into no, known more issues other than the chimney, which has already been taken care of. Um, so we'll have a brand new roof for about a thousand bucks of our village investment, thanks to Donna's ability to give us that grant.
Yeah, good job, Donna. That she did.
Um, as far as the mold in the basement, Donna went out and got a couple quotes on how to, to remediate that. We received two quotes, and that would include the cleanup and sanitization of the entire basement, from the walls, and the ceilings, and the floors. Um, we got one for, from Workin' at forty-one hundred dollars and ninety-five dollars and eighty cents. And, um, we also received one from Belrose Home Inspection for seven thousand and seventy dollars. That included, um, environmental pre and post monitoring, to be sure that all, everything's been removed. Um, we're looking at trying to get a third quote, we're having issues to getting a third quote. She contacted numerous vendors in, in Vermont and New York, and we contacted Exerpro, which I believe is from Plattsburgh, correct?
Yes.
But they won't even touch it until the, we clean up and take care of the drainage problem. So with that said, Donna contacted Brian, and he did an assessment of how much it would cost to, uh, rectify the drainage issue for the basement. We got about twelve hundred dollars in materials that would be needed, and the public works would actually fix it. And then we could go about, um, rectifying the mold issue. Um, have we got any word from the insurance company? Uh, I know that they went in and took an assessment, right, George?
Yeah, but we haven't heard back.
Any word, Carol?
No, we could check on that tomorrow.
You would, please?
They're like taking their time.
Um...
You know, down in the work, you guys spend some money.
Yeah, they're, Donna's did some preliminary work here, is, um, with her building and repairs, uh, accounts, and it looks like we're gonna be about six hundred and twenty-seven dollars shy with the, if we go with Workin', and then twelve hundred dollars for the materials with the public works and the drainage work. Um, I don't know if you guys have been down there, but George and I went down there a few weeks ago. It's, it's a pretty substantial amount, and needs to be taken care of, and we just can't let it keep accumulating and accumulating. And I know, George ordered an humidifier for the basement, it should be here shortly, I would think.
Oh, it should've been here, it should've been there by now.
Yeah, so once the village gets the drains taken care of, and we have an humidifier in there, I mean, should, it should be okay after that. But we are gonna have to spend a little bit of money to get that fixed. Um, yeah, I mean, obviously you can't keep that down in the basement, actually, just to come through the top. But, um, the library board is meeting tomorrow night, and we'll discuss, um, the go-forward plan, and I, I guess really the, the balls in, in our court as far as getting public works in there to get that drainage situation fixed, 'cause it's, it's allowing water to go into the basement. I'm not talking a lot of water, but enough to create mold.
Right.
So we do, we are gonna have to rectify that. So, that's the library update. Any questions from here, Donna? Okay, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, I received a letter, well, I didn't, the village did, the court did, from, uh, somebody who got a speeding ticket right through the village, and they wanted to, uh, recommend the officer for being so polite and nice to him, even though he got pulled over for getting a speeding ticket. So, uh, he actually took the time to send a letter to the court, and commending Officer Andre for his, um, his kindness, even though he gave a ticket. So I thought that was pretty ironic, that he would go out of his way to, uh, to acknowledge our, uh, our sergeant, so, good job, Tom. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
That's not the first one of you.
No, he, he gets, he's twice the time, so.
One actually, actually thanked him for being so polite.
You know, but he's, he's out there doing his job and protecting our streets and...
All right, time for trustee Roberts. Trustee Penfield.
Um, the first item I have tonight is a discussion of something that came out at the last meeting, um, with the, was the request by the DPC, the village, to act as lead agency on the Seeker for the Lighthouse Point Marina Project application. Um, I know that I've spoken to Doug Ferris, and George has also been in contact with our village attorney, and at this point, I think the applications are still in progress, and we're waiting to hear back from Tom Rennan as to getting his input. I guess he, he does, he's not opposed to it, but George has sent him all of the information for him to review. So, I don't think we need to take any action on it tonight. And I would guess we'll just wait until the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have heard back from Tom Rennan, so, as to how, how to proceed. So, it seems like we have a bit of time anyway in terms of the actual meetings that have taken place and the status of the application, so, just wanted to give everyone an update on that. Um, I also had a discussion with Arsen and Becky this afternoon, of one of our issues surrounding our insurance policy. Um, you know, we have the insurance, uh, the, it's a broker, right, Arsen? Yes, Burnham Associates, or Burnham Financial, I guess it is. They have made a suggestion to the village of something that's really in our policy that's costing us about sixty-five hundred dollars a year, that's really not being taken advantage of by our employees. I think only two people in the last three years have actually taken advantage of it, and that is something called a wellness benefit. And they're suggesting to us that we authorize Arsen to, to fill out the form that they need in order to, to take this out of our policy. It'll save the village about six hundred, excuse me, six thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars a year. There is absolutely no change in our coverage through Exelis, all of the health coverage would be the same, it would just be removing something from our policy that's really not It would just be removing something from our policy that's really not being used. So I guess I would be looking for input from the board to see whether or not you think that's a good idea, and if so, we should authorize our Sen to go ahead and do that.
I don't have a problem with it, except that we have to go through the union's...
The salesman asks, is that a negotiated item, if it's a...
No, because it does not change their actual insurance coverage. So, everything would remain the same, they would still have the incentive that they have for the Cooper Fitness that's in their contract, and my understanding is that everything else remains exactly the same.
Or the best new village, sign up to a workout program.
Yeah, you have to log, I think, pretty much, from the way that they were describing it to me this afternoon, you pretty much have to log in on a daily basis.
I'll make a motion to prescribe it.
It's just not, it's something...
You don't take it, go do that, do it.
It's something that the village is paying for as part of our policy that's not being taken advantage of, so.
As long as it's not a negotiated item.
Yeah. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yep, second.
Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Roberts. Any other discussion? If not, all is in favor, vote on your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And the last item I have tonight is to request an executive session to discuss electric departments personnel.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
That's it, for me.
Thank you trustee Penfield. Madam clerk.
Hi, I'm Dr.
Thank you ma'am. Worthy clerk. Thank you sir. I need a motion for recess. No, I'm sorry, I'll come to the public, just in case anybody wants to. George, they do so.
Oh, I think it's great. I think Keith Ashland, I think almost everybody here knows who I am, that you're moving on the snow belt. I mean, it's been there since June. Financials isn't the village's responsibility, it's the property's responsibility, take care of that. I'm glad to hear that this is going forward. There is another property here in the village that's been vacant for a long time. I sat in on a meeting a couple months ago, and was waiting on approval for a loan to have a new structure put up. I've heard through sources that you have not been given any approval, I didn't know what sort of timeframe you were having in regards to the hole that's in the ground right on Lake Street right here across the border.
That's been addressed Keith. And we talked, I talked with the code enforcement officer this morning, and he's gonna be sending a letter to fill it in. He may have enough time.
Do you have a timeframe on that?
No, we haven't, let's discuss that.
I see. That's great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
But we will put a time.
Oh yeah, yeah, once, once we get it squared down. I think we have, what, two days on that one.
Exactly.